We can call a meeting to order. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Clerk Perin, could we have a roll call, please?
Chief Lieutenant. Trustee Monet.
Here.
Trustee Detmer.
Here.
Treasurer House.
Here.
Clerk Perin here, and Supervisor Bertrand.
I am here. So the first order of business would be...
Are we going to motion to accept the agenda?
The first order of business here is the agenda. And additions or deletions, and I am going to add one. Tracy Smith is here from the Higgins Lake Roscommon Chamber of Commerce. And we will give her the opening spot on the agenda so that she can explain some very good news to us all. And then she can get on with her very busy day. So I will move that we approve the agenda as modified to allow Tracy Smith to speak Do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying... Excuse me?
Discussion. Because we had a motion.
If you would like to have a discussion on this, sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, discussion?
Thank you for coming today. There is no secret that I seem to be at odds with the Township Board.
Hang on, hang on now.
I'm making my point here.
Okay, do you want to wait till that motion comes up and make it done?
Nope. This is my discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
I was elected and took the oath of office to uphold upholding the United States Constitution, the State of Michigan Constitution, and all the rules, regulation, and laws concerning a general law of township. I have made mistakes and I will continue to make mistakes. And I am learning, and the more and more I learn every day is a great thing to me. One thing is top priority for me, local legal procedures and rules. Is it moral? Is it ethical? Is it legal? I am extremely hard on myself when it comes to procedures, but my resolve to learn as much as I am able to hopefully and justifiably hold the office of trustee upholding those procedures and laws. Today's changed meeting time is not permissible by law or legal according to Act 267 of 1976, the Open Meetings Act. Most notably, section number three. And I have conferred with two legal scholars this morning and the MTA twice in the last week. If there is a change in the schedule of regular meetings and a work session is a regular meeting of a public body, there shall be posted within three days after the meeting at which the change is made, and it has to be done in a meeting by board majority vote. A public notice stating the new dates and times and places of its regular meetings must be posted. On March 26th, 2025, the Lyon Township Board passed a resolution that all work sessions shall be held at 12:30 PM on the second Wednesday of each month at the Township Hall, and that must be followed by law unless the proper procedures have taken place to change the date, time, or location. I conferred again with the MTA on this and other legal scholars on this matter, and the conclusion is the same. This regularly scheduled meeting time was not changed at a prior meeting or a special meeting approved by the Board, and therefore should and cannot be conducted today. I am taking the advice of my counsel and the MTA, and I am excusing myself from today's meeting because of improper procedures. And I apologize. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, so the motion on the agenda as modified, including Tracy Smith, to be first. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Okay, the motion carries. So Tracy, if you'd like to get up and enlighten us with the great news that you have...
Can I like stand?
You can stand, sure. Just need to be kind of near that little black microphone.
Near here, okay.
We got a little black microphone there.
I hate to like turn my back to people. So real, I'm gonna make this really quick because I know that you're all very busy. And I am also needed at work because the garbage truck took our internet and phone service down, so. There's always something. So anyways, a little bit of history on the project that I'm going to present to you. About two and a half years ago, our economic development marketing group was given a grant to do a FIT assessment through Michigan State University, which stands for First Impressions of Tourism. They came to our area, it'll be, it's a drawn out process, but they came, it'll be two years in October when they came. Last year they come back with all the results and stuff, and one thing that they really, really was pushing, which I've been pushing since I've been at the chamber in 2018, is countywide. So we come up with a plan, and we're doing what we're calling the Freshwater Trail, which will go around the whole county. You can get off on any exit when you're coming from north or south, do the whole county, and get back on the same, and go home. We're hoping they're going to spend time, and we're putting together a three-day itinerary so they can go to each of the communities, because it's also the Houghton Lake, Prudenville area, and St. Helen. So along the Freshwater Trail, we got another grant that is purchasing five, six-foot fish that are going to complement the areas they're placed in. And because I am the Higgins Lake Roscommon Chamber, I was awarded two of the fish. So we're going to put one in the parks in Roscommon. The reason we chose that is we want a beautiful background when this fish is hanging, because people are gonna travel around to see them, just like the swings in West Virginia, the cows in Chicago, the wings in Nashville. So we are going to have a brook trout placed in town, and then we want a place at Higgins Lake where we could put a lake trout we found. I went through all my results from the last few years for Winterfest, and the lake trout is the most we catch. So we chose lake trout. And then I was asked to choose the spot that I would like to place it, and the people from the FIT assessment were really excited that I suggested Phoenix Park. There will be one someplace at Higgins Lake, and like I told Paul, I would really like to see it in Lyon Township at Phoenix Park. So this six-foot fish, and because everything's down at the office, I don't have pictures and stuff, the only thing I have is a picture of Phoenix Park that I took that is probably the prettiest view of the lake. And I think it's because it sets up a little bit higher. So this fish will be on some kind of a structure, because I need to know the Township rules for signage and stuff like that. It's not a sign, but I want to make sure it coordinates with what you like. And then again, I did a picture with the awesome playground equipment that was put in there a few years ago. So what I'm asking today briefly is that you would decide if you would like us to put one of those fish at Phoenix Park, or if you have a better choice to bring Lyon Township into that trail area. We want to pull them off the trail into Lyon Township, and we're hoping they'll visit... The Silver Dollar right now is the only restaurant right here, I believe, is it? Landmark is in Garrish?
No.
They're Lyon, see? So we got two restaurants we can get them into, and the little shops and stuff, and just spend time here. And so we're hoping that you will approve that, and I know it's a board decision, and you probably can't do it today, and that's fine, but I just wanted to explain a little bit about what that project is and see if you had any questions for me.
I may have a question. Do you object to moving it down four or five lots and put it in my front yard?
See, so if it happens like those other areas I mentioned, you get hundreds of people that come into your yard. And then I think it would be...
Yes, Greg's house is the choice.
Yes, well, put it at Greg's. So we thought, they do need to be on public land.
Yeah.
And I don't think you would want like the liability and stuff.
I wouldn't.
But my artist that is doing this is a Michigan artist, and he also does smaller things and stuff, and you might want to talk to him about just putting one at your house.
Just for the grandkids to play on until they get too big, but that's, you're right, it's a beautiful view of the lake.
It is pretty.
It is, very nice.
So I just have been doing a few things over the years. I've brought military bands in and stuff, and they've been in Roscommon. And when they, when I ask them, is there something you want to see? Is there someplace I can take you? They always want to see Higgins Lake. And this is a band from Latvia, a band from a German country, all over. I had the Winds Band that came in, but they all want to come to Higgins Lake. And at first I started doing it because I live in Houghton Lake, and so I drive on my way home, and I would say, oh, you can follow me, and I'll show you this place. And they were just absolutely amazed, and it's just, it started because it was easy for me getting home, but it really is the best view. And so people will take their pictures and stuff, and we're hoping they'll come back every year, because we have so many visitors that do come back every year. They'll take pictures of their kids every year. They can look at those pictures and see how they grow. I will tell you that St. Helen has a bluegill, because they're known for bluegill, and they have the bluegill festival. And that fish is going to be unveiled June 1st, so if you're interested in seeing one of those. And the one that we want to put here, we're coordinating our ribbon cuttings and unveilings and stuff around events, and so what we would like to do is do it Friday afternoon of Winterfest. So, yep. So that's what I have.
Sounds good to me.
That's what I have.
Well, Winterfest, I think we'll approach it around then.
We might have to put the, maybe put the...
The basin first?
Basin first, so.
Who is the artist?
Oh, my gosh.
And that's okay.
Bob, it's Bob, and he lives on Sylvan Lake, and one of his pieces is at either Razor or the fly fishing shop in Grayling. And there is a house that has a three- or four-foot bluegill at St. Helen, so.
I'd like to see his renderings. I'm pretty familiar with lake trout. I'd see what he's coming up with.
So I wanted to bring stuff, and my computer did not, I mean, I just couldn't. So it is Sun Works Incorporated, and that is the artist, and there's all kinds of pictures on there of stuff that he's done.
Let me double check. This doesn't cost us anything, right?
Nope.
Yay!
The fish is already paid for, and once we figure out what the structure is and stuff, I've already talked to donors about doing the structure.
That's great.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I for one, this is great. We'll have to talk it over and make a board decision next week. Hopefully next week.
If you have any questions, just give me a shout.
Does anybody out here have any questions?
Okay, where are you suggesting to put this, that tier? Where the rock container wall is?
So what we want to, what we want to make sure is that when they take those pictures, that lake is in the background.
Oh.
Is what my idea is. I think that would be best, and they are two-sided. So if people were coming off the lake and just wanted to snap some pictures of a six-foot fish, because that is kind of impressive, they'll be able to do it from the lakeside and maybe even have the kids stand up there and look out toward the lake. But I think most people are gonna take it overlooking the lake. So the picture I have of the lake is one I took a number of years ago, and this isn't really great here, but it's one that we took when we were doing the brochure for Lyon Township, Friends of the Park, or Friends of Lyon Township. Okay.
Are there any other questions for Tracy? If not, I greatly appreciate you coming. I know you're busy.
Well, thank you very much for inviting me, and I'm excited that maybe we can do it, because I think that would be a great spot for one of the fish, so.
I think it's a great idea.
And we did get a lot of money in our grant. There's money included for marketing and stuff, so these things are gonna be marketed. And if I, I would say, if I get my way, like I have ideas, stuff on what I want to do, if I get my way, there's some really cool things coming out. Guides, travelers' guides, where the last page, the inside cover, when you look at the inside cover here, it opens again, and it'll be a bigger map, because our guide that we do right now, we don't have good mapping in it, and so we want to do something like that. So there's gonna be a lot of marketing and stuff on this, so.
Sounds great.
So thank you for your time, and I'm gonna rush back.
One other thing, thank you for having these printed up. I'll make sure the teams get in the office for the Chamber's events all through the summer.
Yep, that'll actually go right through Winterfest, and then the other little one I did is the parks, so.
Right. And then this is the rundown for the band concert series at Park 27. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. And if anybody has a business or something they want to take those to, that would be great.
We will disperse them, because we need to talk to the businesses about sponsorship coming out of Q100, the radio station, and probably out of the Houghton Lake radio station, too. They will promote it every week with a different band. They will push that band that week.
Yep. Yep, they're really good about it.
Whoever, whoever the business is then gets their name associated with it for all that time. Great, great stuff.
I'm glad you can use those. I know we've done them over the years. We've had them, so I wanted to make sure I got those to you.
Fabulous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tracy. You have a great rest of your day.
I will. Thank you, you too.
Well, that's cool.
Hi, how are you doing?
Okay.
I've got some long paper. I'll pick one of these and make some copies of that.
So the agenda modification happened, and we are now into the actual agenda itself. I have to make one correction. Down in the bottom quarter of that, as an uninhabited dwelling, that actually should have been 110 Canton Street instead of 311, and let me tell you, I heard it from people who went down there to find this. It is 110 Canton Street. Okay, I'm with the agenda. We'll try and move through this reasonably quick. First thing on the agenda is legal questions to the attorney. I have been funneling questions to them and questions from other people. They are seeking that we, as a board, approve that we continue that process, are more than happy to do it. And I am following up on their request to have a motion for the board to weigh in on whether we continue that process or not. As far as I'm concerned, I'm the legal agent, and I am not going to do much of anything without consulting an attorney, and they are a municipal firm well-respected. So that's my two cents on it, but I can make the motion for more discussion. So I will make a motion to continue the current practice of the supervisor as the legal agent for the township, referring questions on all board legal issues directly to the law firm for advice. So is there a second for that?
Sure, I'll say.
Okay, we have a second. So we have the motion. Is there any discussion on that from the board?
Just one, one comment. On these emails and whatnot, is it possible we can include one or two of us or all of us on them?
I don't see any reason. I mean, recently I've been including everybody.
No, when you're sending to the attorney, I mean.
Uh, yeah.
Like, when we have a question, you send them, you send them an email, but include us on the actual email.
Yeah.
Okay.
Remember, remember back when you guys said you didn't want anything to do with this?
Well, yeah.
No, I get it.
Now we changed our minds, so.
Okay, I get it.
We're forced into it now.
Well, you are a board member. Okay, no, I can do that. Is there any more discussion on it?
We have a line item in the budget for legal expenses.
Yes.
And we will stay within that line item budget for legal expenses by doing this?
Yes, the, it's actually quite high. It was $50,000. I'll give you a rough numbers, I think about 17 of it was used by the prior board, then we have used some, we're nowhere near the limit. Generally, going since doing this, it has been somewhere around $600 to $800 a month for his firm advice on it. Previous to this board meeting, he would give me advice for free on text, there to the point where they want the board to weigh in on it to continue that process. They're okay with it. But yes, there's money involved. So currently, it is set up to be only in emails, and if they touch paper, it's gonna cost us money. So I don't plan on abusing it at all, but when we need legal advice, I will, probably the best thing I could do is send it to all of you guys first. No, I can't do that. That'd be an Open Meeting Act violation.
You can send it, they just can't answer you.
Correctly. I can make them aware, but making them aware is the same as they have no say. Probably I'll send them and share them, because whether or not they answer, and excuse me, but we're gonna leave the public comments out of this for now. If I send them to the attorney, we can get an answer from them pretty quick as to whether they think they should pursue it or not. We'll figure out some way to do that. It's not, it doesn't seem to be a huge problem. Is there any other discussions from the board members? Okay, so on the motion as stated, to continue the current practice of the supervisor as legal agent for the township, referring questions on all the board legal issues directly to the law firm for advice, we will need a roll call vote. Clerk Perin.
Okay. Trustee Detmer.
Aye.
Treasurer House. Supervisor Bertrand.
Yes.
And Clerk Perin, yes.
Okay, the board, or the motion carries at four to zero. And I will mark, Mr. Monet is just excused.
Is he?
I have a tough time accepting that. He's not here, but excused? He excused himself.
Good question. Let me pursue that a little farther. When I do the notes, I'll figure out how that actually should be represented.
Just put it down as absent.
Yeah, it would be excused, absent, or something like that. Let me see what's the best route. Okay, the motion carries. Number two is a discussion on discontinuing the post office box service and send directly to the township office. I don't know how many of you are aware, but recently, the post office, if it's over X amount of weight, they won't accept it, and then if they do, it's a $200 charge. We've gotten caught up in that a couple of times. I got caught up in it personally. Barb really can't do anything about it. I mean, she can't be our concern and front her way through it. We've decided we like to, we would like to go with just having things shipped directly here and the mail back, and the locked mailbox, which is down on that end. And I've been told we have a year to make the adjustments on all of the forms and different things that the township has that have the current post office box on it. So they will forward our stuff to here, and we have that amount of time. I'm gonna make the motion so we can have a discussion. So on the motion as stated, that we discontinue post office box service and have things sent directly to the township office. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there any discussion on it?
If we do that, I'd like to see us have a, I'm not opposed to doing that, but if we do that, I would like to see us having a secure, I don't think the, I don't know, I don't know about the box down there, how secure it is in handling township mail. I'd like to see something that's almost like a bank deposit box or something like that, something that's gonna be secure, that when people, well, when the post office puts it in and puts it in, it's gonna be secure, it can't be easily tampered with, it can't be, can't be accessible. So, so to me, the biggest thing to me is having a secure spot where the mail will be delivered, that it's basically tamper-proof. If that was the case, then I'd be in favor of it. If it's not the case, then we just gotta stay with where we're at.
I think upgrading it to a more secure situation is certainly possible. Not real sure on the how soon, but I know the post office, if I've got that correct, they're kind of waiting for us to let them know, let us know, let them know what we decide to do.
Well, we can have a cutoff date. I mean, we could say that we're gonna, as of November 1st, we're gonna start getting our mail here, and then that gives us enough time to go ahead and have a secure mailbox put in where everything's gonna be safe and not tampered with. So, I mean, there's no time limit on when we, when we close it off.
Only in, only in regard, yeah, I'm sorry.
We are paid up till December, so.
Yeah, the real issue is when they drop something off there that's more than 80 pounds. Right there, we're hit for 200 bucks, and there's no, we had, I mean, Barb can't be the person saying leave it or not leave it. Well, we're gonna wait on the public till the end.
But that would be, it would be simple to have something like that, too, where you could put something big in there, you know, you can have a secure box for mail, and you can have a secure box for packages.
Certainly a suggestion.
This is what we're talking about, those team, something that big.
Yeah.
That wouldn't, it wouldn't be that tough to do.
Yeah, it's just amazing. It'd need, need to be a big box. We're giving up the security of the post office, but I don't mind giving up the $200 Well, okay, well, we do have, we're paid up till December.
The motion is on the table. The information I'm hearing says that we should probably look at how we can upgrade and what the cost of that is before making a final decision. Is there any other discussion on it? Okay, so I'll leave the motion on the table, we can go through it, but I do favor what I'm hearing. So on the motion as stated, and this would involve money, we would need a roll call vote to either do that or not.
Repeat the motion?
It is, the motion is discontinuing the post office box service and have our mail sent directly to the township office, as with any motion, we can vote yes or no.
I...
Would you like more discussion before we get to the actual roll call vote?
I would, because I would, because that, if we just followed that motion, that means like tomorrow it would happen, and you wouldn't have anything secure. So my, my adaptation to that motion would be to, he says we've got a contract till December 1st. It would be to discontinue the post office box as of December 1st when it runs out, and to come up with a secure place to receive mail.
Okay, I can alter it to that. Another option would be to vote no on the one that's on the floor, but I can alter it and redo it.
Can we just table this motion?
Yeah, table it.
I think we're more legal if we just vote no for what it is right now.
All right.
All right.
So if, any more discussion on it? Then on... Then on that motion of discontinuing post office box service and send directly to the township office, we would need a roll call vote, clerk Pern.
Trustee Duttler.
No.
Clerk Pern, no. Supervisor Bertrand.
No.
Treasurer Hopps.
No.
Okay, the motion does not carry at zero to four. Next item on the agenda is a discussion on the Holton Lake Resorters salaries. There was an article that come out in the paper, and the wording in the article seemed to indicate that we were as individuals, elected board individuals, supervisor, treasurer, and clerk, uh, making an astronomical amount of money. But then at the tail end of it, it, it stated respectfully what our actual salaries were. There's been some confusion on this ever since. And I put it on the agenda just to be clear, because I wanted to read what it said. Uh, because some people assume we're making this astronomical amount of money. So the township officials did not seek raises, however, possible raises in the future were allocated. She did not include there that that was for a possible, uh, cost of living raise at the midterm, or the midpoint of the fiscal year, they were not, the money's there, there was no decision to do that. Anyway, supervisor at forty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-seven, it should've actually said supervisor's office, or supervisor, um, in the end, it ended up saying the respective salary is twenty-four thousand seven thirty-seven. For the clerk, fifty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-four, again, that's the whole office, the deputy clerk, everything. Uh, salary is actually thirty-one thousand eight twenty-four. For the treasurer, sixty-one thousand seven oh six, a lot of that has to do with elections. Actual wage was thirty-one thousand four fifty-six. So those are the accurate numbers, and I just wanted to clear the air for this tape, that that is our actual salary, and that those numbers reflect the whole department, the supervisor department, clerk department, treasury department, the bigger numbers. So in stating that, are there any comments from any of the board members about that? There's no motion.
It was just a misleading article, and she should correct it, because those bottom line numbers are your expenses included, it's just, the perception of that, in my opinion, is totally wrong, I mean, she should clarify what that number is justifying. That's the only discussion I've got on it.
Anybody else got anything to say from the board on that?
Well, I, I, I would say that I questioned her after that article at one of our meetings here, and she called me back the next day, and she says, I stand by my article. And I said, well, you can do that, but it's very misleading. And my neighbor came over and says, I just read something, and, uh, you're getting big bucks. I says, no, no, the big bucks is the treasurer guy, it wasn't me. Uh, I'm, I'm getting a raise, but not a, so, yes, confusing it was, and if, if a retraction is in the works, I'm all for it, that'd be great, or at least a clarification.
The clarification is all I told her that I would do, if any of you want to pursue it differently.
No, clarification's fine with me.
Any other comments from board members? Okay, moving on. Uh, the next item is adding administrator duties to the webpage coordinator position. Uh, proposed increase in pay to a hundred dollars bi-monthly. That is currently at fifty dollars, but our intent is to increase, uh, we're gonna revamp the webpage and also move into other media. And the same person, uh, as far as administrating, or the webpage coordinator, is going to also end up being responsible for administering all of that going forward. Uh, I have talked to a couple of webpage services, uh, the one we have now, I'm not a big fan of, other people seem to think they did a great job, I have some other contacts. Bottom line is, though, uh, the, uh, service, the work that will need to be done when we move into this area, and we're moving into it pretty quickly. That's what the pay increase is about. Is there any discussion from the board members on that, because we can do a motion on it? Well, we can wait till the board says, or the.
I have a little discussion on what exactly you mean by bi-monthly, it has two meanings. Bi-monthly means it can be twice a month, or it can mean every two months, and I think if you check the definition, but you mean twice a month.
My understanding is twice a month.
Well, that could be semi.
Bi-monthly is two times a month.
No, it's not, it doesn't have to be.
That's why you're the clerk.
It can mean every two months, so perhaps we could change that to semi?
Well, this is intended to go to the board meeting, so we can, uh, bringing it up here for discussion, sure, could change it to being clearer.
Semi-monthly makes it very clear to me.
Semi-monthly to me means.
Half a month, no?
Semi means, I don't know, well, let's talk some more about how it should be.
We can do that, discussion needed.
Is there any other discussion from the board on that? Okay, we will move off of that and send it to the board meeting with a little fine tuning. Uh, the next thing on the item is VC three, Kodiak Discussion, VC three is our IT company, Kodiak is one. I'm glad to see you sitting here, Courtney. What it comes down to is, I have limited use, and I have problems with VC three, uh, with responsive, and they're apparently changing people. I'm not real happy with it. But the bottom line is, our treasurer and you are probably the people who are most involved with this stuff. So I think, uh, I was gonna suggest that we need to sit down and have a conversation, at least with you two and whoever else, and figure out whether we're happy with what we got, I did call them. They do, uh, BSNA support, but you two would have more pointed questions as to what limit it gets to, and then it's out of their league. Uh, so that's where that is. And we'll have to talk about it this week to see if it ends up on the board meeting agenda. Uh, is there any other comments from the board members about that? Treasurer Hopps, does that sound like it'll work as far as getting what we need in the long run?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. We're gonna move on. Next item is to discuss the cancellation of the planning commission public hearing on five nineteen twenty-five. That was canceled, the only reason it's really here now is that, uh, the chair of the planning commission's in the back there, but we're pretty much waiting on when they would set another meeting date uh, to continue moving forward with a discussion on the animal ordinance thirty-five, which was the amendment for chickens in residential R one, and also the draft for the short-term rental. So it'll be up to them to come up with some dates and set some things up. Is there any other discussion from the board members about any of that?
What, what was the primary reason for canceling, because you didn't have a good, uh, read on the chicken ordinance?
No, the posting was a little different than what anybody would be used to, and combined two things, according to our attorney, we could add something to that agenda, and I did. Uh, the wording, uh, the planning commission did not agree with the wording, so they opted that we cancel the meeting, so it canceled.
Okay, all right, great.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda item is a discussion, or excuse me, the point-of-sale time of transfer draft preparation. I sent this all to the board, you probably have had a chance to look at at least some of it. It is now officially in the works that we start working on it, there's additional information that I will send to all of you uh, from four other townships that did something similar. And a lot like the short-term rental, uh, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we can pick and choose things that look to be smart and wise and fit my township. So it is officially in the works to start doing that. I will say again, for anybody who doesn't know it, the point-of-sale time of transfer that we're suggesting is almost a exact copy from Central Michigan District Health Department's policy for Isabella County. Mostly because if you start arguing with the health department, you run into problems you don't need. And secondly, point-of-sale time of transfer is more restrictive, there's more rules, and we're gonna include well inspections. But what better time to be a little bit more restrictive and really check on things, other than ca- cash being on the table, and people are motivated to buy and motivated to sell? So this is only the beginning piece of what will be our encompassing septic ordinance and its pieces, this is the first thing that I will propose that we do, and then from there, go on to, what are we gonna do about the rest of the township property? What is, uh, not involved in point-of-sale and time of transfer, the health department, I've been working with them, their, uh, fetch system where they can do analysis on who has inspections on record is currently down, it might be back up end of July. Uh, we need to work together as a board and come up with what we would like to see for the rest of the township. Uh, for sure, the fetch system will let us know who's not on record. At that point, we can notify people and proceed in a direction that will include the rest of the township. I've said it before, I'll say it again, it's my hope that we get ninety percent of all the systems on record in X amount of time, that I cannot determine the time, because we as a board have not determined it yet. Are there any, other than just announcing that it's in the works, uh, is there any discussion from the board members here?
I'd sure like a speedup of, uh, some things, I know they go slow, but I would like those, uh, septic inspections and, and those choices that we did get from that sergeant's idea. Uh, as long as the health department goes along with it, um, get that rolling as soon as we possibly can.
Point-of-sale time of transfer is not gonna be a huge problem with them, they're overjoyed we're doing something. When it gets into the other stuff, I've been working with them, and they're, they initially were like, no, 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 maybe we're gonna find some middle ground.
Continue that good report, huh?
Yeah. Any other discussion from the board?
Well, I think we all agree that we wanna protect the water and the lake and all that kinda stuff, and we wanna get this done, and we wanna do it in a a reasonable and a fair fashion, so, uh, I'm, I'm with, uh, Greg, and it would be nice if it, if it could roll along a little bit faster, but some things, if you're gonna do it right, you gotta take your time and do it right, so it's better to do it right the first time than to have to do it over, so.
Yeah, and in this case, I think there's only two things that are not what they already did, and they had a massive six-county effort with, I don't know how many people they got involved in putting together that one for Isabella County. When you talk about, you know, trying to cross all Ts and dot the Is and figure out what can go wrong, they did it. I, I personally do not have a problem with that point-of-sale time of transfer. Uh, any other comment from the board?
I think we should set a deadline of July first for the board to have any changes made to this current draft that people want, so we can get it hashed out and get it going, that way, if we don't put it, if we don't have a hard date on it, we'll be in the winner.
Yeah, I would say consider that, because.
A month, a month gives everybody time to put their input in on this, and then.
So you're talking mid-June? That would be around the time of our board meeting.
We could have it done at the next, it's a Saturday board meeting, too, I think.
Well, it's even better.
Yeah, yeah, I would say we did that, and then present it.
That sounds like a good idea.
Present it, and let, let's get the, uh, opinion of the residents on a Saturday meeting, where you'll probably have quite a few, quite a few more residents, I would imagine, come to that meeting.
Yeah, there may be, and you have to always remember, it's point-of-sale, time of transfer, septic, and well inspection. Doesn't have anything to do with anybody, unless they're selling property or buying property. The ownership is on the seller, they need to get these things done. And we need to have a, uh, ordinance officer in place who can track, and that would be probably Mr. Brayley, and.
By the time it's an ordinance, we'll have an ordinance officer.
That's my plan, or one who is well-versed in this. It's not about chasing people around, it's more about recording the information into the fetch system. Okay, any other comment, or discussion from the board? Okay. Next is a cemetery equipment update, good lord. We have a zero-turn mower, um, had a hydraulic problem. Also discussed that possibly a straight-drive lawn tractor with a trailer might be a better fit for our current new Sexton Bruce. Took it in, and it is currently at power equipment in Holton Lake, they're attempting to sell the old one. Uh, and the price, uh, it was seventy-seven, which is reasonable, I think they dropped it to seven now. Uh, we're really hoping that they sell it before we end up purchasing the new equipment, the new equipment probably wouldn't be more than forty-five hundred. But it'd be nice, so the maintenance crew told me, we're good for right now, they can use the zero turns that they have to take care of the cemetery, so I'm inclined to ride it for another week or so. Uh, and so that's an update to the board, has the board got any discussion on any of that?
Do you have any reason to think that another week is going to get us an offer on the, uh, the mower?
I have every reason to think that if they sell it, that is the easiest route.
Oh, yeah.
If our maintenance crew is okay with what we got for right now, that's kinda where I'm at.
Yeah, we kinda had an agreement that we wouldn't get the new stuff till we got that one sold, so that's what we're trying to do.
That's what we're trying to do, yeah. Maybe we'll get lucky, and if we don't, we're good at least for a little while with the zero turns we have. Any other discussion on that from the board? Okay, this one is gonna take some doing. Parks and Rec Committee suggestions and an update. I believe I sent you all this stuff. For the purposes of this meeting, I'm gonna make a motion on one of these areas, but without reading it all over, and I know you guys have it, the Parks and Rec Committee is suggesting that we go with a purchase of the new buoys. The reasons being, uh, to protect the public health, minimize the degradation, oh, I'm sorry, uh, wrong one. Next one. Uh, I'll go with the buoy replacement first, and then we'll go to the bands. So, uh, John Walsh had put buoys in before, prior to twenty-twenty, he has a trash pump to jet pressure there, the, uh, the weight in and a barge to work from. The concerns raised at our meeting, uh, and for the safety of the kids, get them in quickly, longevity, make them stand out, the general appearance of them as far as representing the township and the water log disrepair, sinking of the old buoys. Kids get at them, hold them underwater, they take a little bit of water, and then they don't sit as high. Further discussion on John's, John gave me a quote initially for eight-inch PVC pipe, which is what the state park uses. which is what the state park uses. And at that time, thought Garrish used. By jet pipe, water jetting goes into the ground. You can get them down in there far enough where they're stable. And somewhat indestructible, then you have to put the swimming area stickers on them. So he gave me a price for that. But then the night before our meeting, he got back to me, he had been to Garrish and looked at what they were doing, which is starting with a two-inch fence post galvanized, putting a little bigger PVC over that, then the eight-inch over that. Supposedly, these are indestructible. But you need the eight-inch on the outside to accommodate the stickers. So he gave us a price to do the three at Sammaset Park, the three at Phoenix Park, and the two at Townline Boat Launch because you need a red and a green for Red Right Returning, of a cost of $18,040 for the materials. So that is a, not 18,000, 1,800.
That's a little better.
That's a little better. $1,840 for the materials. And that is a one-time cost with an estimated lifespan of over 15 years. Other than sticker replacement, maybe. Installation now and to remove in the fall is 400 bucks each time. So the total price came down to being, I thought I figured that out already. $2,640. So if you take the 1840 out of that for the materials, in the future, you're talking 800 bucks, 400 in, 400 out each year if we continue with his service. Due to the necessity of trying to get this done and get it done quickly, I am going to make a motion that we do approve that John Walsh to do the purchase and the installation of the buoy materials at a one-time cost of 1840 for eight buoys and 400 in and out again using his barge and trash pump. So the total for that would be 26, or 2,640 dollars. I'm going to make that motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. So we have the motion, any board discussion on the motion?
Yes, you give us an 1840 for equipment and 400 for in and 400 out. Are we talking about the 26 for the whole year then? The in and out?
2,640 for this year, but in the future.
I know.
In the future, the materials.
Yeah, 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 okay.
That's why you're the clerk. Any other board discussion on it? Okay, so on the motion as stated for 20, $2,640 for John Walsh to install those as stated. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Clerk Pern?
Sure, Supervisor Bertrand.
Yes.
Trustee Detmer.
Yes.
Treasurer Huff.
No.
Clerk Pern, yes.
Okay. And the motion carries three, two, one. The second thing from the Parks and Rec Committee that is being forwarded to us is the approval of the final band contracts for the 2025 Music at Park 27 Amphitheater. We had discussed the cost previously when we were doing the budget. And we had discussed that we wanted better bands. Doing the budget to try and get it right around $10,000. Previous one was $7,000. The bands that we got ended up coming in at $10,450. So it's about 450 over what the estimate was when we first talked about this. It was a scramble to hook these people. So I essentially had a contract without finalizing it, was sending in the W9s. This is something we need to get done. If we do not finalize it and approve it, it could potentially turn into where they get a closer job and we're not done, we're screwing around with it, they take a different job. These bands, if you look at these, these are all pretty high-quality shows in Michigan. And we hope to really promote it through QON as stated previous. Probably 98.5 in Holton Lake too, through the Chamber of Commerce, and try and turn this thing up. It's taxpayer money for a great event, try and bring people in. For three of these events, 719, 712 is Jake Allen, who is nationwide now. He will be followed by a band or, a band, no karaoke at the Silver Dollar. So Jake will play 6:30 to 8:30, Silver Dollar will be 8:30 to 11:00. The second one is Mark Arshak, he'll play 6:30 to 8:30. That'll be followed by one of Mike Wagner's bands at the Silver Dollar. Same setup, one band here, then a band there. Third one is 726 at Stone Street Revival, that is a premier concert band in Michigan. Mark 726 on your calendars because they'll be followed by the American Band and the Silver Dollar, which is another premier Michigan band. So 726, all three of those dates are going to be more of a festival atmosphere. All that being said, in order to move forward, I would, I'll make the motion that we approve the contracts with these bands at a total purchase price of $10,450 for the summer concert series at the Park 27 Amphitheater. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, then we have a motion. Is there any discussion from the board on that motion?
We're not paying for the bands to play at the Silver Dollar, are we?
No, it was a matter of trying to do some mutually supportive promoting.
Well, that should be really clear because of Holton Lake Resort is going to post that we're paying for bands to play at the Silver Dollar or something.
Oh, no, it's not even in the postings in the paper. The paper posting, I don't know if you've seen that already.
I understand, but.
No, I exclude, I'm not going to mess with the liability or the legal issue. The promotion part comes with, if we're using QON and the Silver Dollar is using QON, then it would be okay if our, whoever plays at our place ends up saying, you can go to Silver Dollar after this.
I just want it to be made clear that we're not paying.
No, Lord, no, we're not paying for them.
So there are going to, there will be private donations from various entities coming in next week. And I would like to get some signs made up for advertising for them. So that, actually, that cost that you cited is going to be less with?
It should be, and we had talked previously about using donation money for advertising. QON, I talked with her twice about this and they, that's probably the best thing we can do. They do a promotional thing where they're pushing heavy and QON is all over northern Michigan. Some of these bands, Stone Street Revival, Freak Daddy, there are people come from miles away to see these people play. If it's promoted through the radio station, it would, I would go out on a limb because I didn't finalize any of this. But let's say on the week that Mark Arshak played, maybe it would be sponsored by B&amp;B Marine. So on the radio advertisements, it would, they would be pumping that that band was playing that week and they were sponsored by B&amp;B Marine. So that the sponsor gets a little bit of promotional juice out of it too. But none of that part's finalized. I mean, this doesn't start until almost July, well, the last weekend of.
Coming up?
Well, 628 is the first one, they don't start right away.
June.
Yeah, in order to get better bands, we couldn't have as many. That's okay. So that, yeah, I will call her back. I mean, if we finalize it and move it forward, then we're in the game for the promotion and everything that goes with it. Still looking at trying to put the fire department sign here and have a new sign at the fire department. Theirs isn't big enough and we need one. That could happen too, real quickly. Any other discussion? Okay, so on the motion to approve the contracts for the bands for the Park 27 Pavilion at a cost of $10,450. We will need a roll call vote. Do we have that, please, Clerk Pern?
Pern, yes. Detmer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Bertrand?
Yes.
Okay, this is up in our game considerable to be the equivalent of Trestle Park or try to be as far as drawing people in for the businesses around here. Trestle Parks are all on Thursdays, so there's no conflict there at all. Moving on. How much time are we into here? I just got done with a Zoom meeting on this. The Parks and Rec Committee is really concerned about the West Side Boat Launch parking. I'm sure all of us are. We would like to see it get resolved before somebody gets killed, not if. It's going to happen. I attended a meeting and of all, some of the movers and shakers in the county. They're concerned to, generally, I'm going to chase and push on the DNR to do something about it as far as possibly limiting it. Or they're going to hold responsibility when something goes wrong. It's not going to be easy. Other people have tried, I'm going to run it up the flagpole. Somebody is going to end up signing off on the fact from the DNR that this is okay, that they're fine with this. Last year, one time I measured, it was a mile of trucks and trains. Both sides of the road, people going 65 miles an hour. What do you, what could possibly go wrong? So they're, actually, their attitude, the state police was, I heard today, was, you know, unless something happens, it's not a priority. Well, I'm not going to wait around, at least I don't want to. So one of the things that came up in our conversations, and I'm going to explore this too, or we can, was the possibility of leasing that, the township leasing that thing from the state. We could lease it for a dollar. It is not a revenue thing as much as that may be in the end the only way that we can control what's going on over there. So I don't know that that's going to happen. But if everything else, if the bottom falls out and everybody else wants to do nothing, that is certainly a possibility. And St. Helen, they, St. Helen, they leased the boat launch there, but different reasons. It's not a moneymaker, there's like, you pay a yearly pass of 20 bucks. The thing that I liked was of that 20 bucks this year, they're, I think they're taking $5 and putting it right back into the lake as far as the dash boats and all that kind of stuff. So there's a way to actually use the, you're not going to make money on the revenue, but you can use the revenue to try and help the lake too. So there's some possibilities in there. So I'm just making you aware of that. The last thing is a sand replacement. We discussed that the sand needs to be replaced at Sammaset Park. There is a small piece of township property at the Big Creek Outlet area by the Amets. And potential chip replacement at Phoenix Park. A meeting with Roger Saxton Monday to go look at this, look at these areas and see how much sand and how much, what's the cost, can they get it to us easy on a day when they're all in sand? We'll see what the possibilities are. And that also hooks into Wade from S&amp;J let me know they did the misdig permits and they're probably going to start this week on fixing the road at the compost site. Road Commission might be in some manner going to try and hook that together to use those trucks to also haul compost out, bring sand in, whatever we can do while all this machinery is running around here at the same time. So just making you all aware that that's what happened at the Parks and Rec Committee meeting. They are going to go visit the parks, make a to-do list. My interaction level now drops. The appointed officers, it's, I'm just a member. They're also going to work, they want to work hard to reestablish friends of mine in township to facilitate all the things in Parks and Rec going forward. Next meeting, May 23rd. So that was a load. Fortunately, we have three people on there who are motivated to do things. GFL update. They are, I have gotten a couple of calls that they really like the fact that GFL is picking up one large item a week. And it's helping with the blight situation because if somebody puts something out there, it disappears rather quickly. There's a couple of them hanging out there that I'm working on with them about what to do. But as far as the update from that, yes, that is what the current contract is. They will pick up one large item per week. If it's a refrigerator, it has to have a sticker that the free on was removed. I think we all know that if you put a refrigerator out there and put a freeze sign on it, the scrapper will have it pretty quickly anyway. But that should help with the overall blight situation. I didn't know if Treasurer Huff said anything on GFL on where we're at with the contracts or any finalizing, maybe you do, maybe you don't.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Although the leave pickup is, I think we started Monday. It was the first, it was supposed to be the first resident leave pickup. Didn't hear anything, so I don't know.
No, I got.
They complained, so I'm.
I got a couple of calls already of people that like that. But I noticed driving around, you know.
But as far as the contract goes, I mean, I could sign at any time, really, if it's done. I'm just, I just want to add a couple of things and before it's actually assigned, so.
Yeah, and he also did say, if you didn't forget again, to put stickers on the cans about trying to keep stuff in bags instead of throw it in there loose. Couple of complaints, you know, when they dump them, if it's windy, stuff's blowing all over. Not that a sticker is going to stop them, but. Okay, any other discussion from the board on GFL? Okay, next item, discuss a fire department sign upgrade. Stick with that for the first part. We're talking about this to, their sign, when you go 65 miles an hour by that thing, it's really not big enough. We're looking to buy one. Didn't take rocket scientists, figure out if we use that one and combine to buy a better one for the fire department, because we need one here badly. I hate those things. But we need one here badly to promote what we're doing and let people know what we're doing, be able to rotate the stuff on the sign. So letting you know that that's in progress. May or may not happen, but it'd be great if we could. Yeah, second part is recruitment and the budget process. And I don't know if Treasurer Huff, if you had anything on the meeting or the next meeting coming up on when they were talking about the recruitment. Because to me, you know, we started out trying to do it on Memorial Weekend. If we're lagging, we can do it on the 4th of July weekend. If it's, you know, if we're not getting there quick.
Yeah, there, I think Monday we're, I'm going to meet with the fire department and they should have all their ideas together. And then we're going to take the 150 degrees upon and use them at their pancake breakfast for Memorial.
Okay, because concerning signs, that is another thing that we could probably get signs for. Or have the fire department budget purchase signs. If we're going to, I mean, if we're going to have a recruitment drive, we need to start getting some signage and advertising out there. Or if it's not till Memorial or till 4th of July, that's fine. Just let me know if it's, if it's going to be quick, let me know quick. Generally, the turnaround on signs is at least 10 days. Okay, any other board discussion on that? Okay, the next item had to do with Ray Street, Sammaset Property, Lakeside. Okay, the next item had to do with Ray Street, Samoset Property Lakeside Deck. Mr. Monae knew all about this. In his absence, I know nothing about it. But if he's present at the board meeting, we can certainly bring it up there again. Next is to discuss resolution number 2021-011, which is the previous resolution. I wonder what the date is on this one. This is from 2021, but it had to do with credit cards, having the credit cards available for the township and the fire department, or was it fire department? No, for the township.
For both.
So in order to do this, we need to pass another resolution and up, and update this thing, which isn't the end of the world. And just to be sure, this is separate from the next thing in, or down, the next thing is purchase cap for fire chief. On turnout gear, these are two separate things, right? Maybe?
Well, if they use the credit card to do it, it'll be the same thing.
Okay. Okay, so I believe I emailed this to all you guys. It's kinda is what it is, giving them credit cards and a limit, and we would approve it at a board meeting. So any discussion on that from the board members here?
My only thoughts are, and I think it's been settled already, but this is gonna be a place of the debit cards. Is that correct?
No idea, but I hope so.
Okay. I think that's the plan.
Yeah, somehow my debit card's out there buying things. Just so you know, I did not buy $240 worth of donuts. Okay. Though in, maybe in six months I might have, but not in one purchase. Okay, next thing is the approving, approval of the purchase cap for the fire chief. And that had to do specifically with the cost of one set of turnout gear to be established. Whether that is part of the credit card or not, it doesn't matter as much as I think it's a good idea that they should be able to buy a set of turnout gear to have it on hand rather than being in an emergency situation and not have it. Any thoughts from the board on that?
Yeah, if they don't have the equipment, they may be out of service. They wouldn't, wouldn't have enough to man one of the rigs for one of the calls, and I think that's unacceptable. They gotta be ready to go at any time, so if you need, if you have a new recruit, you're gonna be taken care of.
That's what I thought this was about, was if somebody comes in new.
Yeah, but, but he's-
Then they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to go through the whole process of springing that money. It would already be established.
500 bucks is good, I think.
Oh, God, I heard 35. Treasure from hell. That'll get you to the fire.
God.
Okay, any other discussion from the board on trying to set it up so that they have turnout gear?
I think the turnout gear was supposed to be somewhere in the neighborhood, according to J.C., about three grand, and we thought that maybe it should have a little leeway there, so I don't have a suggestion how much, but it's gotta be at least that much.
No, that's fine. I'm throwing it out there. We need to figure it out by the board meeting and we'll have some numbers. Okay, any other discussion from the board? Okay, the next thing is an uninhabitable dwelling on 110 Canton Street. Again, if you're carrying an agenda that says 311, I think that is not correct. Previous, previous board Harry Johnson were involved with this property. I actually knew that, I know this guy from a million years ago. The property is in complete disrepair. Somebody must have made a complaint and started the process, and they went through the complaints and the posting of it and the letters to the person, and got to the point where they had an attorney letter, and then everything stopped. And a neighbor asked me, what's going on with that? I haven't heard anything in a couple of years. So I checked into it, and the receptionist was very helpful finding some of the information on it, and yes, it did just stop. The previous legal firm here had sent the last letter out, so I reached out to them. I said, what's going on? I don't know. We sent this letter. They sent me a copy of the letter. So apparently it stopped here within the township office. I had no problem looking at, okay, 'cause I mean, you would in theory wanna move forward with this, and then the thought struck me and I went and looked around. In Shopnagons Lodge, I only looked there, there's at least three more that are at least this bad. Not blight, not stuff in the yard. This is roofs caving in. They're done. They're toast. Then the thought, from being in the union before, partiality and abuse is a big issue. So why did this guy get selected when other people didn't? And in the back of my mind, I'm almost thinking they dropped it because his attorney might have brought up, why me and not everybody else? And today I found out, he's paying us taxes. So I found three other ones, my plan that I'm throwing in front of the board here is I'll drive around the rest of the places. I know there's more. Maybe we'll have a list of eight or nine places, and then send them all a letter saying essentially, your place is in disrepair. To me, it's more like, what are your plans here? What's going on? Is it still in the family? You know, an initial letter, but send it to them all because I do not wanna be in a position where we're singling somebody out based on not having a written complaint from somebody. So that was just initial thoughts, and a lot of it was today. What do you guys think about going forward with, with this stuff? It's certainly blight, but it's not about stuff in the yard. It's about the buildings.
Well, I mean-
Toast.
I don't know. My opinion, that's, that's up to the building inspector to go look at it if somebody complains. I, I don't, I don't know if it's really up to us to go looking at houses and determine if they're inhabitable or not.
No, I, I agree. I'm just talking about if I'm gonna send a letter to this guy.
If somebody hasn't filed a complaint, it's not a problem. If somebody files a complaint, then you look into it. You could drive all across the state of Michigan, and you can see houses and barns and crap and disrepair and all that kind of stuff.
Absolutely.
It's not our, it's not our job to go out and inspect every house and all that kind of stuff. If somebody has a house next to them or something, and it's a blight and they're complaining about it, then you open it up. You just don't go around looking for stuff that nobody's complained about. Got enough stuff to do.
I hear you. The only reason I mentioned it more is because I have familiarity with partiality and abuse, and I'm curious if that's what stopped this one. There was no reason to stop. And I don't know that there, I couldn't find a complaint that started it.
It's a long process too. I mean, you gotta-
Right.
You gotta record, you gotta have the judge weigh in. The judge could say, give them 60 days, give them 90 days. I mean, it's not gonna happen fast.
No, I, like I said, I don't know why it just stopped, and the resident came to me about what, you know, what's the status. I don't know. Just thoughts, getting thoughts around.
I like the idea of not singling one guy out if you know there's eight or nine, but I also much get behind, if there's no complaint, why look? But I think if there is a complaint, then we've got an issue, and if there isn't a complaint, we don't.
I would say that the person who came to me and asked, they did not formally complain, they asked me to look into it. Probably they would sign a complaint. It's their neighbor and, well, you got, you went and looked at it.
I'd say for sure, if I'm across the street or next door to them, I'm signing that complaint.
Yeah, so we could-
This is horrible.
No, we can do them one at a time if they sign a complaint. Just somewhere between now and our board meeting, kicking around a little bit more. And see what we come up with. Any other discussion on that from the board? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. We're getting close to the end here. Discussion on a trailer for metal at the compost site. This is in its infancy. They have one at Garrish where people throw metal in it, make a donation for things. I don't know that we need to do all of that. The bottom line is to keep it out of the woods, kinda. That if we had a trailer parked there where people could throw metal in, might not be the worst idea in the world. And also, if somebody needs a piece of sheet metal to do something, to me, that's repurposing, and I am way more into repurposing than I am recycling. So I wanted to bring it up to the board. We don't have to decide anything right away, but it is a thought.
When you say trailer, you mean a roll-off dumpster?
No, it's a regular trailer like our fire department trailers.
Do we have to buy a new trailer from this project?
Well, it depends on if the fire department's always using the two they got.
All of them are being used, so.
See, I didn't talk about, what are they using them for?
They're using them for leaves, brush, to tow the mowers back and forth.
Yeah, for sure, well, yeah.
So, I mean, if you wanted to do a roll-off and have a scrap company drop one, that's fine, but buy a trailer for it?
Well, I don't know. I'm just saying that the, the idea was intriguing. Actually, they were, they were, if you took metal out of it, you, there's a donation thing, a locked one, and all that money went to, I wanna say the House of Roscommon where people who are involved in trying to get away from substance abuse. You know, there was, there was a point to it. We don't have to do anything other than just think about it, maybe come up with something, or not.
Is there, has there been a problem with metal? I mean, why do we, why is this coming up?
Because I saw it, and I like the idea of repurposing.
It's also, it has to do if they've got some scrap metal, set it alongside the road, put a freeze sign on it, it's gone in about 20 minutes.
Right, that's generally what happens. And now, actually with the, if they're gonna pick up one large item per week, did they pick up metal, just metal pipe?
Oh, sure.
Scrappers will, they know that. All right, I don't wanna get bogged down on it. It was a thought. Last but not least. I've been in contact with under sheriff Lowell. I'm looking into trying to get the sheriff's department to get involved in our complaints for our noise ordinance. We are not 24/7. We will never be able to respond on noise ordinance. And there are at times some dangerous situations associated with that. The guy in particular who I talked to, the sheriff had come out and actually suggested that the person go over there and talk to the people who were being too loud. I've heard a lot of stupid things in my life. That's right up there. I don't know anything more about that, but there used to be an agreement by us passing a resolution that the Roscommon County Sheriff's Department could write tickets on our ordinances. I certainly don't want anything blanket, but there's two, or the main one is gonna be the noise ordinance, 'cause they're 24/7. Stuff like dogs running around loose, our calls they're normally gonna have to take anyway. I have been, it's on the webpage now, and I have been telling people, we are not the police. If you feel threatened, if you are in any way in a situation where you need help, call the sheriff's department. Do not call the ordinance officer to try and resolve something that is a safety issue. If it is something about a complaint that we can get to later, fine. But the issue with the noise ordinance is late at night, and the other one was to firm up the fact that they're who, I have, I think I had three calls in the last couple of weeks for trespassing one neighbor against the other neighbor. That's got nothing to do with us. I know it was happening before. It's not gonna happen with us, or at least the current ordinance officer. Those are disputes that need to be handled legally. And trespassing, if somebody is on your property on a weekend when everything's going crazy around here, I'd call the police before I went out there and confronted them myself. So it's in the stage of talking about it, but it would come down to us passing a resolution. So I'm presenting it to you. I talked to the undersheriff again today, but not about this. But he and I can get together, I, I believe it is certainly possible. It's gonna be based on whether they're in agreement, and then we would just do a resolution.
Aren't those already county ordinances? Isn't there a county ordinance that says that you can't make too much noise at that late at night?
I don't know. We'll get into that when-
Well, there's gotta be. I mean, that's, that's just the way it is. So if, if you, if I live in Roscommon County and the next door neighbors are, are being loud and obnoxious at late at night and stuff, that's a county ordinance. I'd call the county sheriff's office, and they're duty bound to come and, and do that. That's what they do.
I did talk to a sheriff who was on his way to another complaint, called me, and I mentioned that about him. I said stuff that would be typically disturbance of the peace. He said, we don't write tickets for disturbance of the peace. I don't know if he was giving me a line, if that's accurate. I hope to get to the bottom of that with the undersheriff.
Well, they may not write tickets for it, but that doesn't mean it's not a county ordinance.
No, I don't, you know, if it is, it is. My main concern is that people who are used to calling the township need to quit calling them when there are issues like this. Trespassing and noise at, at 1 o'clock in the morning is not something that you should go over there and start confronting, in my opinion. And by calling us, there's nothing we can do about it. If they video it and, if they video it or they record it in some manner, it still, to me, ends up coming down, if you call the police, then it goes on a police report potentially. You would maybe know more about that. But I would like to talk with him more about having that option be available, because we're never, we don't have our own police department, and we shouldn't be sticking our nose. I got files downstairs full of things that he said, she said. I'm not getting into any of that.
To me, the bad thing would be to find out whether those things are a county ordinance. If they're a county ordinance, then we don't have to do anything about it. We don't have to let them enforce our township ordinances when there's already a county ordinance in place.
Just a matter of letting the residents know, that's what they should be doing.
And I just find it hard to believe that there aren't any county ordinances in place that, that.
There may be. I'll find out. It's an ongoing thing. Any other discussion from anybody else about that? Probably by next week I'll know more, not that we would pass anything, but I'll know more by next week. Okay, if there's no other discussion? No other things added? Okay, it's time for public comment.
You've got an additions added by the supervisor or board members.
Oh, that was a, yeah, question mark for if I did or not.
Okay.
And it was, for this one, it was only Tracy.
Okay.
I should have struck the Ray Street.
Keep me moving, that's the main thing.
Okay, any comments from the residents about any of all of that that we discussed in this work session?
Well, he, he says, he took it off, but his was a supervisor. There's still board members. If you have something, go ahead.
Well, it's on there as a reminder that it could happen. These go to the public, 'cause on there is a reminder that there may be an addition by the supervisor or-
I got something I wanna add for a next meeting.
In order to add something to the agenda, you have to have everybody here, which we don't have.
You know, he's actually right about that.
No, I'm just, no, I don't wanna add to the agenda. I just wanna make a comment for the-
For next, for the board meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
You are right about that though.
And maybe put this, maybe put this comment on the next, for the board.
I will write it down as fast as you tell me.
So, I think we need to get our maintenance man a couple dollars an hour more. And my reasoning behind that is, I've spent some time with him the last month to see what he does for the township, and this has nothing to do with the fire department. This is our maintenance man. Currently, he makes $16 an hour. He hasn't had a raise in three years. His helper, who he just hired, makes $15 an hour. So, it's just my opinion, I mean, I think we should at least get him $2 an hour more. We didn't, we didn't give him a, we didn't give him any raises at the, when we check office, like we did the deputies. like we did the deputies. Not saying anything against the deputies by any means, but, you know, he's been the longest-tenured employee for the township as well. So, a couple dollars an hour, I mean, we've already stated, none of us are taking raises, as far as I'm concerned. And that two percent that you had allocated in the budget, I, I mean, everybody got a raise, all the deputies, employees, some employees, or other employees got raises. Everybody did accept him. So I'm just throwing it out there now, after spending some time with him, to see what he does and knows. He's very valuable to township, and if we lose him, you know, it could, you know, it wouldn't be fun to replace him, I'll just say that.
You're not gonna do it?
No, no. So I just want to throw it out there for, I'd like to put it on the, as an agenda item for the meeting.
I can do that. The, as I said many times, my take on it was to understand what the budget looked like in the fire department first. And Pam actually told me last week, they got a lot of money.
Again, this is nothing...
Yeah, I get it, I get it, that it's separate. But that was my only holdup. And I don't have that holdup anymore, so I agree with you. Let's talk about how much money, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my only pick, or my only...
All right. Any other additions by board members? Okay, then we'll move back to public comments. Anybody wants to come up? That little microphone there is taking the place of the handheld ones.
Okay, we'll see.
So it should work. But calling out from the crowd is probably not gonna pick that stuff up.
Just a couple things. And 110, Will?
Yeah, that's good.
110, Canton?
Yes.
I started that report probably seventeen years ago.
Oh, geez. I didn't need to hear that.
Back then, you know, it depends on who the powers that be. They were just afraid to put any money into an attorney, other than the road ends. Once they got the road ends, whatever they did to them, it's not too bad. There's a couple that weren't so hard to get the attorney to talk to other people, like the fire chief, or the ordinance officer, or anything like that. But that's been going on a long, 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 long time. I was ordinance officer for eleven years.
So this has been that bad, that long?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
It started out as blight because of his construction equipment. And he covered that up. All the things he put to cover up the equipment now have rotted and are ripped open by the wind.
Well, there's trailers there, there's all kinds of things all over the place. Everything there is dangerous.
And there's a great big hole in the roof.
Well, there's something there. I just thought it was a skylight. It wasn't going too close.
That, and you may want to check with J.C. about that turnout gear. I had it set up so we buy one quarter of the department turnout gear, because it's only good for ten years. And you're violating NFPA standards. They can use it for training, can't use it for fires. But he may be at that point where he's gotta buy several other people turnout gear, a couple other people turnout gear.
Are some on the brink right now?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're years apart. You know, you don't have to buy them all at once. So I think, we had sixteen people when I did it, so I bought four, four sets at a time. And by the time you get around to the last people, you just do it over again, four, four, four. You go a couple of years where you don't have to buy any. Thank you.
Wait, don't run off. Give me your best shot on why it didn't proceed, you know, on Canton Street? You were talking about legal, and people didn't, like, board people, board attorney?
Board attorney, and they wouldn't let it go to the court.
Who wouldn't like it?
The township wouldn't let it go to the court.
Okay. Interesting.
There's probably a big old file down there.
There's at least one, if not two.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments? Sure, come right on up, Patty.
That's sad to hear, that this is that long.
Well, it tells you how hard, how difficult it might be.
Geez.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Patty Dennis. Couple of comments about a couple of things. One, about the post office. I just have a little bit of concerns about leaving the post office. I understand your concerns about paying the additional money. Why can't you have things shipped to a physical address here? Because you have one that are gonna be the $200 costs at the post office, and then let the regular mail go to the post office box? And the reason for my thinking about that is I know that the government is looking at the post office and how to make it more profitable, and et cetera, et cetera. And it might be another nail in the coffin to close our Higgins Lake post office. And I think that would be a shame, you know, to not have the convenience of that post office here. And so if you guys remove yourself from it, I'm concerned about what that would do. And I think that Lion Township, you know, has been long-term associated with Higgins Lake, and I'd hate to see that post office disappear. The main thing I wanted to talk about was the septic ordinance. And I understand that you're working on the point of sale and time of transfer, and I understand all that. And I, it's better than nothing. But I'm wondering why, when you guys took office, you just didn't remove the piece that you didn't like about the previous, about the high-performance piece? Because the rest of it, I think, was a reasonable plan to make sure that all properties get inspected. Because we know the turnover, I mean, what is the percentage of turnover in properties here, a year? I don't know, but I'm guessing, I'm guessing it's less than 10%.
Oh, yeah, must be.
And so, the, the properties that you're gonna hit with this proposed ordinance are gonna be very small. And I've heard you say, "Well, we're gonna do something about the rest of it." Well, unless you put it in an ordinance, I think it's unlikely that people are just gonna do what needs to be done and do the responsible thing. Because that's the way it was. And we had people, I attended all these septic ordinance town halls that were held, and people got up and bragged about the fact that they hadn't done anything to their system in thirty years. And they didn't plan to do anything. So I think to assume that people will do the right thing is a mistake, because the past has proven that hasn't happened. So I don't understand why we can't have inspections for the whole township. And you can roll it out in the various waves that were proposed with the previous ordinance, so that the inspectors and the haulers don't get overwhelmed. But something more needs to be done. And I know there are boilerplate inspection forms that can be done. And I wanted to also distribute to you guys. This was published, I know, I hope you've seen it. If you haven't, I'm going to distribute it, because I'm not sure the rest of the board has seen it.
Actually, I got copies for them.
Okay, so you have a copy of this, this is essential?
And I marked all of the things that are inferring fact that are not, but yes.
Well, I'm not sure how you can interpret their data differently than they.
It may be attributed to, or, the connections, it's a connection. It's the same for others.
Well, what I've heard from you, Paul, is that...
I'm sorry, go ahead and talk.
There isn't any data that you agree with, that doesn't meet your, your view. Because I've heard you say that about the Health of Higgins Lake initiative that's coming up. Now you're saying it about this, and so I have concerns about that. You know, I would like to think that you're going to keep an open mind. And I've heard you state repeatedly that all of the failing systems were lakefront, and that's not true. So, you know, anyway, so that's that. And I also have to say in general that I'm concerned about the budget, and I'm concerned about the, all the additional money that's being spent by this board for a variety of things. And I'm wondering where that money's coming from as a taxpayer, because I didn't feel like the previous budget had a lot of wiggle room. And so, I don't know where that money's coming from. And I'm not a CPA, and I don't know, but I have concerns about it, because it seems like a lot is being spent that wasn't being spent before. So, thank you.
Can I address a couple of points for you?
Oh, sure.
The, yes, I agree with you 100%. We should have the deliveries here. We have a USPS that has a key, can get as far as the library. That big thing would have taken two people probably, but it would have been here. And there wouldn't be any $200 bill.
Right.
I think we can use this address for most things, but only the USPS has this. FedEx does not, and nobody else. We might have to vote on getting some kind of access for all those delivery people here, so at least they can get that far. I also 100% agree that the security of the post office is much better than our little boxes out here. But as Steve was saying, yes, maybe we need a better box, a better system, so the stuff can come right to our address. We have a little box out there, one by the door, and a little bigger one there, yeah?
The box on the road is bigger than the P.O. box. We have them, that's locked down there.
Yeah, but the P.O. box is inside.
I mean, it's a steel mailbox, steel.
Yeah.
I mean, when you talk about the budget, why should we spend money when we can have it here?
All right, these are hard discussions.
Yeah, they are.
Let's leave it to the public if they got anything else.
Just my thoughts.
Time-wise, I agree. Everybody needs to be inspected on this property, everybody.
Everybody, and if you guys don't make them have to do it in an ordinance, it's not gonna happen. That's, that's my point.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Oh, Mr. Bedouin. How's the knee? Good.
Good to go. Not to run hurdles. Sam Bedouin Jr., Lion Township. Let me mention some happy stuff first. We haven't had a Fourth of July parade in years. Think about it, if not for this year, for next year. When Steve mentioned about...
Where would you have it?
Right here.
It just goes...
Right, it starts...
Went by my house.
Right behind where Craig's house is. That used to be Ron and Angie's store, that's where it started.
Yeah.
And it went down past the Silver Dollar Bar. And all it takes is one person to organize it, and you'd be surprised what you'll get from Roscommon, Lion Township, but it was a lot of fun back in the day.
See, like, it started at Phoenix there, and then they shored up there, and then went down to the Silver Dollar. Yeah.
The mailbox, if you do this, make sure it handles absentee ballots.
Got a lock on it.
Now, what I'm about to say may sound constructively critical. Back during the campaign, there was a, this is a reminder. There was a commitment to the community on removal of the sewer issue via through, to dissolve Glua. Irregardless of what's going on now, or what may happen in the future, like you talked about lake stewardship, there might be some monies involved. To me, it does not matter, except, when I say "we," you know exactly what I'm talking about. There was a commitment that if we can remove Glua, you would do it. You've done that, as far as the SAD and the physical lake location of the spot. All you need to think about now is just dissolving Glua and get it done, instead of having it hang over as a black cloud. The longer you wait, the worse it's gonna get. It can just be done that easily. And maybe you look at what Garrish has done. But the monies that might be due, that was never discussed last year. My opinion, my opinion is, if it's something you're gonna have to pay back, no matter if you're out of Glua or in Glua, you gotta pay it back. But I think that our community is waiting for you guys to pull the plug on Glua altogether, and put some happy faces, and then you can address other issues. Now, call me old school, and I've said it before. You all are obligated to make decisions on behalf of the community of Lion Township. I'm not against lawyers. Lawyers are just for counsel and opinions and suggestions. That's fine. It still comes down to you. I remember, we would contact MTA back in the day. That was free counsel. I don't know if that, I think it's still free to call them. Well, they handle some 1,380 townships. They're gonna give you advice. Any one of you can, if they still exist, you can call MTA on your own and look at what they may have to offer, also what Paul is gonna do on your behalf. And I'm glad to hear that a couple of you guys are gonna be involved in that. It should be that way. Because I was gonna bring up that you should at least have two guys involved with the lawyer, just to keep it straight, that's all. Because in the past, it got ugly. When, oh, the lawyer said it to you, well, we didn't know. You guys could have conference calls with your lawyers, too. All right, I mentioned about the parade. I mentioned about the MTA.
Wait, wait, would you be the chairman of the parade?
Absolutely, I would not consider, but I would consider helping in any way, shape, or form.
Well, yeah.
Parks and Rec Committee might be able to pull it off.
Because there is a lot to that, as far as contacting, but you get, I had a cousin many years ago that took it up, took it by the horns, and was successful. And several years ago, we had it. It just takes one person, and when they hear about you having a parade, you'd be surprised at the response you may get. But you gotta start early, though, you know? Like, this is May. Could you pull it off? Yeah, you could pull it off if you started with somebody now. Get a hold of the chamber, get a hold of the high school, you'd be surprised. If not this year, you've got plenty of time to think about it for next year, but it was a... Those of us that were here, that live here, it was a lot of fun. It really was. We had the honor guard from Camp Reiling. You know, we called them up, they were here. So, there's a lot of things you can do. But I do want to resolve and emphasize, because I don't want to bring it up again. You all have one vote. That's your obligation that you gave to the community. That's why you're still here. I think that's about it. Yep, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I did hear some information from, about Glua today, earlier in the meeting. Garrish Township has formally asked Glua Board to meet and continue dissolving Glua. All I know is that our attorneys are working on trying to get out of the debt. And that's where it is. I, to my knowledge, there's not another Glua Board meeting set. And I don't know what that means.
Well, like I said, that was my, my opinion, Paul, that this debt that they're talking about, to me, it doesn't matter. If you dissolve Glua and you're gonna owe it, you gotta pay it anyhow. There's no need, that could take forever. This doesn't take forever.
I think the reason that we're doing the attorney thing is because how that money gets paid back, in general, deciding that before dissolving was the general opinion. I hear you well, and many people say, "Kill it."
Well, that's my opinion, but I, that's why I'm stressing. You all have a vote. You've done well up till now. You got rid of, you rescinded the SAD, and you took care of the property. That was great. To me, you just need to end this now. The lawyer's gonna give you one impression. I just can't, I can only look at, that's their opinion. I don't want to ever hear that the lawyers are gonna tell you guys how to vote. That will not work well.
They never, they never tell us how to vote.
But lawyers are lawyers. They may not tell you, but I want to see that you guys know independently, you have the right to vote on this project. Right now, it takes three out of, three out of five of you to get it done. You can do it next week at the meeting. Get it done, get it over, and then whatever Garrish does, that's their business. Remember who started this? They had to come to Lion Township first to get it going. Well, you can turn around and say, "You know what? We're done. Now you guys do what you want. There'll be an audit. If you gotta pay it back, fine, you're gonna pay it back no matter what. But the longer you go, I don't think it's gonna be a healthy situation for you. I really don't. But thanks again."
Thank you, sir. Anybody else got any comments? You're sitting here all the time for that brief...
I have to watch what I say.
Alright, so, uh... I will make a motion, then, if public comment is over, therefore, I'll make a motion to adjourn at two fifty, what do you got? Two fifty-two, I'll make that motion, we got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed the same. Okay, the motion carries, we are done for the day.